Well, welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. Tonight, we have some special people here to try and explain how we're going to spend 116 million dollars to bring services to the town of Milford, and what services we're bringing to the town of Milford, and why we're bringing these services. The show tonight is always not meant to influence anybody, either pro or con on any of these articles. What we want to do is let everybody know what the articles are, and then let you have an informed opinion, especially town meeting members and to residents, so they can contact their town meeting members. So let's start with introductions. Mike?
Good evening. My name is Mike Walsh. I'm chairman of the Select Board here in Milford.
Brad?
Hi, I'm Brad Hornberger on the Finance Committee.
Chris?
Chris Moore in Finance Committee.
Okay, so we have 26 articles that we're going to be going over at the town meeting on the 24th. Why don't we start with, well, number one is really just a quick overview of the reports that will be given. Chris, I assume you're giving your normal head of the Finance Committee report.
I think it's going to be a last second discussion between the Selectmen and the Health Department on how long my presentation will be. I know my last presentation was rather short because of the circumstances we had going on. I'm hoping that we can at least have a little bit more time if we've worked out the kinks, because I know I get some feedback from some people asking for more information, and, you know, with time constraints and the way we were online, we were a little constrained. So, but yes, I intend to make a presentation.
And that's a good point. We are going to have another virtual meeting, May 24th. Mike, anything that you think the Selectmen are going to report on?
No, I think to be honest with you, Al, you know, Chris does a great job, you know, on that report at the very beginning of town meeting. And I think we're just going to let Chris do his presentation, and then we'll open town meeting from there.
Sounds good. So Article Two. Chris, you want to explain Article Two?
Article Two is a 2.5% increase to the people that fall underneath that. I think it was very important to recognize that these people, you know, last year, for God, they're raised because of what was going on. Obviously, we took care of them later on. But this is a group of dedicated personnel that are essential to this town. So it's a 2.5% increase on their pay, and it's a favorable recommendation by the Finance Committee.
Article Three. Brad or Mike?
Sure, I could jump into number three. You know, it's similar. You know, it's about a 2.5% increase, but now we're talking really about elected officials in the town. So in case anybody's wondering, it's not the Finance Committee. We're straight up volunteers. But there are a group of elected officials that have paid positions, and it's across the board at 2.5%, with just a couple of small exceptions. But that's, you know, a cost of living adjustment for people that give a lot of time to enter the town.
Okay, and that was favorable by the Finance Committee?
That's right.
Mike, Article Four was by your board?
Yes, Article Four is to see if the town will vote or raise an appropriate such sums or sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses for the financial year beginning July 1st, 2022. This is just, this is presented by the Select Board, and Zach gave a really good presentation on this at one of our meetings, and it's just to defray the costs going into 2022, or any that we make have come up.
And again, that's 116 million dollars.
Well, I think the exact number is 116, 608, 447, correct?
Absolutely. I'm glad you watched the Bennys.
Yep.
Article Five, kind of a consolidation of articles.
Now, Al, can I just make one quick comment before?
Sure.
Because we get this every time about Article Four. We just did 116 million dollars on this show in about 22 seconds. So I'd just like to highlight this, and Mike knows this, and so does Brad and you, but I just want for everyone at home, we, this 116 million dollars is 12 months' worth of work between the Selectmen, the Finance Department, all department heads. We worked for 12 months to come up with this number. So just like Mike didn't, I would have done the same thing. We don't propose 116 million dollars really nearly. We spent 12 months working between the Selectmen, the Finance Department, and department heads to be able to come up with a number like that. So don't think that we go through Article Four that quick. It is, that's the big enchilada, and that's the huge amount of work that all the great people that work for Milford try to achieve.
And it's interesting, because some of the general comments about town meeting is there's very little controversy. And I always laugh, saying, you should be around the 11 months prior to it, when we're going through the individual budgets and seeing how.
That, Al, that's a great point, and to Chris's point, what people, you know, really need to realize, and Chris did a really nice job bringing it up, is that there are boards, Brent brought it up, a lot of them strictly volunteer, that are working behind the scenes all year long, you know, getting things ready, you know, for the May town meeting, and then before we know it, we're back in the October town meeting for the capital expenses. And there's a lot of dedicated people that spend a lot of nights in, well, not right now, but did in Town Hall, but via Zoom, you know, getting all these things ready.
Now, is it true that the rumor is you're going to vote or propose to double the Finance Committee and the School Committee's salaries?
I didn't, I didn't see that one.
Well, two times zero, I don't think would affect the budgets. We'd be okay.
Yeah.
Article Five. I am so happy that we took six annual articles and grouped them together, because in the past, we had to go through six separate discussions. And most of it is like, well, somebody wanted to go through it, or would you like me to?
No, and just very quickly, Al, and you brought up the great point, and Jerry Moody always painted when we call these housekeeping articles, but every year, town meeting is required. To your point, even silly things like, can the town treasurer borrow money? Well, if the town treasurer can't borrow money, then we have a big problem. So in order to expedite town meeting, the Town Improvement Improvement Committee said, hey, we have these like eight or nine articles that we're spending all this time, you know, presenting each one individually, and everybody knows they're housekeeping articles, like something like that. How about we group them all together into one article, and let's make our four and a half hour night down to maybe four hours? So I think it was a great idea by the Town Improvement and Study Committee. So that's basically all this is.
Any other comments?
No.
And Chris is right. Things like, can the Selectmen authorize us to spend money? Well, if they can't, well, you don't have a town. I mean, if somebody hits a light pole and their insurance pays, can the Selectmen accept the money to repair the light pole? Again, some of them are just, or the ticket money. It's just common sense. Favorable from the Finance Committee on that. As we go through Article Six, this is one that people seem to not really understand. Funding collective bargaining. Brad, Chris?
Sure, I'd be happy to take you there. Collecting a bargain agreement between town and the Highway Department. And there's a 2.5% increase, cost of living adjustment. There's a retro component to it, back to July 1st. Finance Department, you know, Committee views that as a favorable recommendation on that one. I think, you know, this probably falls under the umbrella of some of the HR type issues that we talked about in the first, you know, the first article or two, maybe the second, third article. But this one is, you know, obviously, union related, so there's an negotiation involved, and it's just a different timeline.
Absolutely right, Brad.
Brad, am I right?
When we let them, when we tell departments to budget, we don't let them budget perceived raises or anticipated raises. So they have to budget for what they know is the number. So what happens is that we make them budget for what is currently the number, and then later on, unions get together, they negotiate, a number comes out, and then we have to say, well, now we need to backfill the money that we shorted them while during the negotiations were going on. So this is all this is. This is a standard article. But it's a very important article to know that we only budget for what we know. We don't budget for what we anticipate, which is an extremely important tactic that we've always done in Milford.
Well, Chris, isn't that number somewhere around 45,000? Yeah, the impact is 45.
45, 337.
Yep.
Yep.
Now, the whole idea is, when the negotiators go in to bargain with the unions or other people, if we tell them we budgeted 3%, you're kind of giving away how much money you have.
Right.
So we made the decision years ago to budget 0% increase, and then backfill it with an article like we are here. Okay. Article Six. No, I'm sorry, Seven. Article Seven. Somebody want to talk about the Memorial School roof?
You know, Al, this is, this is an interesting one, because the other night, this, this really opened up a topic of discussion. Because, you know, you think about it, the, the actual estimate came in at $65,000. And I think it was, and I agree, it was quite a few members on the Finance Committee that were like, how are you going to repair the roof of Memorial School for $65,000? And, you know, it came up as, what are we, just patching it? You know, and so it really, this Article Seven, although I do believe it did get a favorable from the Finance Committee, did open up a lot of discussion, and I, and I agree.
I think, Michael, people didn't understand that it's not the whole roof. It's just a little part of the roof above. Is it the library branch?
Library, yeah.
The library, yeah. And I think what was surprising about it, you know, for us, was when we asked those questions, I find that it's really just a shingled roof, kind of similar to what you have in a residential style roof. We obviously encourage them to go for the 30-year kind of quality roof, as opposed to like, you know, cheap out on it. But it's, it's more of a residential style roof on that part of the building, where, Mike, you're right, everybody's eyebrows are up, that you're never going to get it accomplished for that, for that cheap of money.
Right.
That's what we learned by asking the questions.
Yep.
And that was favorable. Article Eight. This really does bring home the point that every penny, I mean, no disrespect to the FinCom, the School Committee, or the Select Board, but no penny is spent in this town without town meeting's approval. We all can want to buy something, but here we go. Setting a bad check fee. I mean, this is simple. You write a bad check, the town gets charged. Now we want to charge your back.
This, to me, would be, if it was a recurring thing, which this is going to be a one-time thing, if this was a recurring thing, that would have been up with the other housekeeping articles. This is a basic thing, and to your point, that for every quarter that goes into a vending machine, or every, we don't have parking meters anymore, but the point is, every cent that comes into this town, it has to be accounted for. So even something as simple as this, I mean, it's common sense. Someone bounces a check, we charge them a bounce check fee. But if nothing can be done unless town meeting says it can be done. So even something as common sense as this, we have to go to town meeting to have it approved.
Now, we're going to jump to Article 11. I'll save two articles, nine and 10, for the end of the show. But Conservation Commission. This seems like an easy one. There's a little trapezoidal piece of land that if we sold it, could bring us in a whole $10,000 a year, which is a lot of money. But when you look at the impact to the town, it opened up a whole can of worms that doesn't look obvious. Mike, you want to bring us through?
Yeah, Al, this, you know, this is just an example of, as you know, I think we started out, there were about 80, 89 properties that they were looking at to possibly auction off. And they came back to, Chris Pill, of the town treasurer, came back and said, well, you know, some of those really should, you know, stay, you know, with the Conservation Commission because of their location. This is exactly what that, what that is. This is a, this is a piece of land located on Upper West Street that for stormwater management, that we're looking for the article at town meeting, you know, for the town to, to put it back to the Milford Conservation Commission.
Is this the one that Amazon or the railroad, the railroad wanted to use as an access point?
I believe it's the railroad, is it not?
It is the railroad, and that's what the big part of this land acquisition is, to be honest with you.
So we would get all the trucks and everything loading and unloading in Milford? Is that, I think that was the big reason that the FinCom.
Oh, there's no question. I mean, we always love $10,000 coming into our pocket. But when you're talking about the repercussions of what the railroad acquiring this land and what they could do, and the implications for traffic and the environment and everything else, this is an investment back in the town, and hey, that $10,000 isn't worth it. I'll tell you that right now.
Yeah, we got enough traffic rolling through now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Article 12. Accepting peg access money.
Well, exactly what we're doing right now, Al, we're on Milford TV, and Milford TV is funded through that small little line on the third page of your Verizon and Comcast bill, in which each member of the community is charged, whatever is a dollar 26 per month, or whatever it is, I don't know. But that goes back to our town, and it gets divided in between Milford TV, which we're currently on right now, which gives the ability of everybody out there watching us, God bless you for watching us, and then also for the Milford High School and their video department to be able to purchase equipment and do their video project. So this is something, it's just a simple transfer that was negotiated between the Select Board and the carriers, both Verizon and Comcast, and we're trying to get the money back into the town so that those two departments can do it.
Yeah, and for years, they sent the money, we took it, we gave it to the TV station, it was done. It's just, last year or the year before, the legislature in Boston said, no, we need town meeting to approve. I mean, it seems like a no-brainer. You want to give us, you know, half a million bucks or so a year? We're not going to say no.
And it's not the town's money.
Right.
That's the most important thing. It's the customer's money.
And Chris, you made a good point, too, that this is really just the transfer. So this is not the agreement to have that little charge on the bill. That, this is actually just when the money is there, we're just authorizing the transfer of the money to where it belongs. I think it was last year that we got a little chucked up in-town meeting about what we're literally doing, if my memory serves. So I wanted to go back to that, because I think this is really just authorizing the transfer of the cash, as opposed to relitigating the whole project. I mean, this is already in place.
Yeah, you're right, Brad. There is no relitigating anything. It's a 10-year contract. We get X dollars transferred to the town. Now it's in the town's possession for use of Milford TV and the high school TV. So it's pretty straightforward. It's just, somebody's got to write the check. And the only one that can write the check is town meeting. It may be in our bank account, but town meeting's got to authorize writing that check.
Yeah, and I think, Al, you know, I think what's important is that, you know, the technology that's at the high school, having sat on the school committee for nine years, the technology that's in the TRC, and, you know, the gentleman that's running the meeting tonight was just talking to you and I earlier about the technology updates that they put into the, you know, Milford TV. You know, and it's, it's, it's all state-of-the-art. And when you, when you sit there and, and you, you know, you do an interview with yourself at Milford TV, not that we've done them in a year, but, you know, when you do the interview with Milford TV, or you're sitting in at the school committee meetings, the quality in the, of the technology is state-of-the-art, and that's what this, this, you know, helps do.
Yeah, and it also helps train our kids. When we first started this show, I mean, I laughed. It was in the back closet of the Milford Cable Company's facility. And you had a rule that you could only go 120 degrees, because if you went more than 120 degrees, you saw the storage unit all packed up. And you realized that it looked pretty good, but oh my God. And now, inside the studio, it was hard to get kids to come down and help. Number one, because they weren't really excited about using analog technology. They had more technology in their cell phones than we did in the studio. Now, nothing against Paul Revere when he installed all the equipment, but now, all of a sudden, as you mentioned, Mike, we got state-of-the-art equipment. The kids really can learn.
Yeah.
Okay, we move over to Article 13. Cooling Tower for the Town Hall.
Yes, sir. So the cooling tower at Town Hall needs to be changed. It can't be really serviced anymore. You know, it's, it's, it's on its last legs, as the old saying goes. So this article is to appropriate the money to replace the Town Hall, the cooling tower at Town Hall.
Mike, what's a cooling tower?
Cooling tower, Al, is basically what we use to, almost like it's kind of like a heat pump. We use it to, you know, funnel in AC, fresh air, things like that.
And just so everybody knows, this has been planned for a number of years, but this year it failed.
That's correct. Yes.
So we looked at, it would cost us 10 or more thousand dollars to put enough Band-Aids on it to keep it alive till the fall. And what we said was, this is silly. I'd rather spend the money now, six months early, and thank God, Milford's in a position that we can afford to move money forward. Because we're going to, go ahead.
Now, that's, that's an area where I have to really give the Finance Committee a lot of credit because of your capital plan. But, you know, every year, when you, when you go to some of the Finance Committee meetings, it'll come up in a meeting where if something is an emergency, it doesn't mean that we're not going to, we don't want to hear about it, and we're not going to look at it and say, you know what? This is going to have to unfortunately jump ahead of something else. And that's exactly what this is an example of, is that, you know, we didn't, we didn't think that, you know, the Town Hall cooling tower was, was going to be in the shape that it is now. And, you know, the Finance Committee has graciously said, let's, let's move it up. You know, we've got to do it.
We had, you know better than us, when the frame cracks on a vehicle, a lot of times, it's not worth fixing.
Right.
So we have another article we're moving up. I mean, the spring, we don't know how much free cash we'll have. But when we look at the spring meeting for what you said, we've always said, capital items that are in emergency or special circumstance.
Right.
When Tom was cheating, Pete got a grant that had to be spent by the summer, which saved us $65,000 on lighting. That should have been a fall article, but National Grid said you got till July to spend it. There's no way we're giving up $65,000 because of a technicality.
Right. Right.
That is going to end up being around 75,000 to 85,000 to replace. And again, if anybody doubts why we need it, no air conditioning, no heat would not be a good thing. And the dang thing is like about 10 feet tall. It's not your little, you know, it's not a little condenser like you have outside your house. This is a monster unit, but it has to do the whole Town Hall. Okay, Article 14. The Personnel Board has indicated that we have some issues with our salary structure, and we want to make sure that we're being fair. I mean, we can hide behind, legally, we have to do this. More important is, it's the right thing to do for Milford people. And town meetings always stood up to do what's right for Milford people. And to the Personnel Board's credit, when we couldn't get all the answers in a row by the May meeting, they're going to pass it over until the fall.
Yeah, I was going to say, Al, I have a note saying they're passing that over.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay. Mike, this is a Select Board issue, number 15.
How about we skip to 16?
You got to talk. Definition of a massage parlor.
Mike, we skipped to 16.
Is there any background on the definition meaning anything?
We skipped to 16, Al.
Well, it's over at the board, at the town meeting.
You got to get the four of us in trouble. We skipped to 16.
Okay. 16. Conservation Committee. Parcels of land off Upper West Street again. I believe it's all the same type issue, is it not, Mike?
Yes, it is. Yep. Yep.
So again, positive, favorable recommendation?
We refer to sponsor on both those articles.
Oh, when? You're right.
Yeah.
Those are referred to sponsor.
Yeah, that's what I have as well, Chris.
Now, for anybody who doesn't understand, the Finance Committee can go favorable or unfavorable, and that typically is the two positions we take on money articles. When it comes down to specialized information or non-money articles, we'll have a recommendation of referred to sponsor. That's not meant to imply favorable or unfavorable. It's just, it's outside the purview of the Finance Committee, or we don't know enough.
But now, and now, we, we talked about this once every three times we do this, and we've been doing this forever, and Brad and Mike, you've, you've been doing it, too. We never explain to people what we're referred to sponsor. If we're referred to sponsor, it doesn't mean that we like it, we don't like it. To your point, we don't have the educated opinion to provide. So we say to everybody, guys, listen, we, we know our finance stuff. We can say, yes, it's good, no, it's don't. Take your facts and your decision from who is sponsoring the article. So, Al, I, I'm glad you brought that up, because a lot of times, you don't cover that. And I think it's an important thing, because we throw that around, you know, with us, like, we do everything else, that, oh, everybody understands what referred to sponsor is. But for the people at home, I think it's important for them to understand that. That doesn't mean we don't like it or we like it. It just means, hey, I'm not the guy. And you want to talk to me about cameras, I'm the guy. You want to talk to me about cars, Mike's the guy. I'm not the guy. So we refer to sponsors simply saying, it's out of our wheelhouse. Trust the opinion or the presentation by the presenter. The Finance Committee doesn't have an educated opinion on it.
And it's a non-money article.
Well, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, Article 17. We're talking about the second phase of the biotech laboratory at the high school. Brad, you want to bring us up?
Yeah, this is one I'm excited about. It's, you're right, Al, it's Phase Two, and we're investing in equipment for really physical science labs. And it's, for anybody who's thinking about spending money in the schools, and you're thinking, hey, you heard about changes coming. We know that it's, we've ensured that it's all things that can move if there's work done in the school. This is portable things, as opposed to permanent structure of science equipment for the labs. We invested in Phase One already. This is Phase Two. And the School Committee and the School Departments have been really patient with us a little bit as we've gone through this, because, you know, during COVID, we had them put on delay a little bit, because, you know, we were trying to manage cash flow during COVID and everything that was happening there. Now we're trying to get it in this article, because we want to have it in place this summer so that the students will have it in the fall when they come back. So that's something that I think a lot of us are really excited to see go forward.
And this comes to the Spring Town Meeting under the Special Circumstance Clause. Because two years ago, we put in Phase One, and then last fall, the School Committee was going to bring up the second phase, and we asked them not to, because we weren't sure. We were not certain how much free cash we'd have and what the pandemic would do. So normally, this would definitely be a fall article. But again, they're planning on implementing this in the fall, and we asked them, as a Finance Committee, to please put it off six months, and they did. Any other comments or? Again, Brad, what you brought up that was absolutely on the mark is, if you went into the science wing, C-wing, anybody who went to Milford High would be very familiar in the past few years with all the equipment in there, because it looked the same. You know, it's amazing. You walk in, you say, this looks just like, oh my God, the lab when I was here.
Al, I am class of 95, so would that, that would put that... Al, I am class of ninety five. So would that, that would put that lab at twenty six years old?
Go back, classes.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, and that's when I graduated. When I came in there as a freshman, that's what the lab looked like. So just to give everyone a a clear cut of what this school has been working with, they are working with a minimum of a thirty year, um, science lab, which that is science, math, that's where the world, biotechnology, that's where the world is going. And to have our schools dealing with a thirty year old science lab, half the things were broken even when I was there. And to think twenty six years later, it's still got the same lab. That's why this this project is a fantastic project. It's well deserved and, um, I'm happy it's going through. Or I hope it works through, excuse me.
Yeah, I I believe this is absolutely needed because I'll go back to the nineteen seventy four when they put that equipment in there.
Careful, Al, you're dating us. Yeah, well.
Well, actually, Al, do you mind making, can I make one more point?
Sure.
So that every bit of this investment is transferable. And by saying that, if for some reason we build a new high school, we do, we, whatever, everything in this purchase is movable. So everyone's gonna say, well, what the heck are you doing? We're gonna build a new high school. Why are we gonna fix everything? But it's not like fixing the roof. If you fix the roof on the high school and you move to a new high school, that can't come with you. All this investment right here can come with us. So if for some reason we build a new high school or we move science from the E wing or the C wing to the A wing, everything can come with us. So, and I think that was a crucial decision, knowing that no matter what we do here, it's not like Middle East where we invested in the heaters and then we left the building two years later. This is an investment that will stay with the kids and with the staff forever.
Absolutely. Article eighteen. Somebody want to talk about OPEB?
Uh, OPEB is a, is is our biggest liability, our our second big biggest liability on the on the books. It's a post, um.
Other post employment benefits.
Yep. Um, it's 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 a fund that we are required to fund on a certain schedule. We have a schedule that's set up by the state in which we need to meet certain requirements that we pay every year. Um, I will tell you that Milford is in the ninety second percentile in funding our OPEB account, which is absolutely incredible. Um, it's a fund, it's almost like, um, paying off the national debt. You do what you can to try to pay it off, but let me tell you, if you're honest with yourself, you're never gonna be able to give this money off. But you do what you can. And Milford has been super aggressive. Uh, like I said, we're ahead of ninety two percent of the state of Massachusetts in helping and and not in helping, in funding this particular account. Um, and they, we're talking about thirty four, thirty six million, it's grown in the last four or five years. So we're talking significant dollars. But this is basically, um, just to to work with that particular fund um, and and what we have to do, um, with the new administrative changes, uh, to help, uh, fund that account.
Yeah, this basically gives our treasurer a little bit of room to invest that money. Because if you think.
It's a zero dollar article, very good point.
You know, you think about it.
Two point six million, wasn't that the number that came up the other night?
That's about what we do, Mike, you're exactly right. But this this is doesn't not gonna cost the taxpayer any money. It's just what what it gives Chris the ability to do certain things to reel in deal as a treasurer does, as we hope he does, to get Milford the best deal.
Right, and I think the question came up too. Should should there be more than one trustee on the on the, basically on the trust? And it was, Chris did a really nice job explaining that it really should just be one person. So, you know, it's it's, you know, it can move faster, it's more flexible. You don't have to wait, you know, get two or three people together and, you know, have a discussion.
Well, and think about it, some of the things you do, you know, you've got two people that we really do trust, not because we like them, but because they've earned it, Zach and Chris.
I don't like either one of them.
I don't care if I like them. As long as they bring back, yeah, exactly. But you think about it, they came to us last year and said, we can pay off some bonds that we got, you know, you gotta remember, we bought these bonds twenty years ago. Or we sold these bonds, I should say, not bought. So the interest was very different. Both, um, Dr. Philler and Dr. Taylor came and said, now's the time to cash these in because we'll save a lot of money.
Yeah.
So it's that kind of flexibility that really keeps our finances strong.
That was smarter than you walked into the room, you should probably listen to them. And when those two walk into the room, I listen to them.
Especially if they're both coming in with a unified voice. Good odds, it's a good thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would I would echo that sentiment is is the newest volunteer here. Um, you've been doing this for a couple of years. I I would want everybody in the town to know we're really lucky to have Zach's team. Chris, of course, is the treasurer that we're talking about here. Um, the closer I get to them, the more impressed I am in terms of, you know, the command of what they have and what they're, of the facts and what they're doing here to be proactive. And then also, you know, they nailed it with trying to restructure our debt to take advantage of the low interest rate environment that we're in right now. And he could go on and on. These guys are really on top of it and the town's really lucky to have them.
We jump to Article nineteen. Mike, talk to me about Vernon Grove Cemetery versus cemeteries.
Well, what it is, it's actually Vernon Grove, Al, in in North Purchase Street. And what it is, it's just, it's a language change. So instead of it using the word cemetery, they're changing the language to cemeteries um, in in three different areas of that. That's really all that is. And it's also another article, um, to Chris's point, it was referred to sponsor. Um, so we're gonna have somebody from Vernon Grove or Town Council speak about the article. But all it is, is just exchanging the word cemetery, meaning singular, to cemeteries, meaning plural.
Well, you think about how many years ago, God, Michael, we're dating ourselves again, that people who had loved ones or family members up at North Purchase Street.
Yeah.
Were coming in and complaining about the jungle because nobody was taking care of it.
Correct.
And then we begged the Parks Department to do it, but did not really set up to take care of cemeteries.
Right.
And it was, I think it was either Jamie or somebody before him that came and said, guys, we're doing Vernon Grove, we know cemetery. Why don't we just take over the maintenance of North Purchase Street?
Correct.
And make it uniform.
Right, two of them, put the two of them together. Yeah.
Especially again, they know how to take care of cemeteries. It made perfect sense.
Right, right. And it is, I'll tell you something, you, uh, you, only because I go down there, you take a walk around Sacred Heart, that's an art. It's an art to take care of a cemetery. And, you know, you've got to remember, you're dealing with somebody's loved one. And now somebody put a plant down there at Mother's Day and, you know, you get the mower coming down. And it takes a, you know, a particular talent to take care of a cemetery. It really does.
Well, you're right on because St. Mary's just asked everybody to remove all articles around the tombstones because they have to do the cutting and the maintenance. If you don't remove them when they ask, then they'll remove them. And you touch my mother's grave, I can't say it without emotion.
It's an emotional thing. It is. Trust me.
Now, it's my responsibility to live with the rules, but still, I don't know that I can be unemotional when it comes down to my mother's grave.
Right.
Okay, Article twenty. Brent, you want to talk to us about a pick-me-up truck?
Yeah, so this is obviously far less emotional than the last conversation. But we've had two old vehicles. We've had two old vehicles, a two thousand seven plow truck and a two thousand five van with the tools. And, um, they're looking at the needs that they have and saying, you know, we can do this with one vehicle that's like a multipurpose vehicle that can help with them as a maintenance rig or on campus. And they can also do some plumbing with it. Um, it's a sixty thousand dollar investment in this, in this, uh, plow truck. And it's a favorable recommendation from the finance committee. And I think, again, this is one where we've asked them to help us a little bit with the timing. Um, you know, we got, we're doing it now because we can have this piece of equipment, you know, acquired and then, uh, made ready for for service. So it's ready in the fall for when it's time to deal with snow and ice again in the late fall.
And I think one of the questions that people are gonna be asking is, we thought Scotty takes care of all the plowing for the schools. Do you want to address that, Chris?
Uh, it it is, it is an absolute, uh, group effort uh, between the school department, the Parks Department and the highway department. All of them do a great job and it is a, they, everyone works together. When there's a huge snowstorm, the highway department has their plate full. Um, you want to help with the Parks Department. But when it comes down to it, the schools, the the highway department may do the large parts of it, but the schools still need to clean up. You can't, I mean, there's just too much area. And the most important thing is to get those areas cleared up for the children. And it, and Scotty's worried about the roads and, you know, the school is gonna need to clean up for itself sometimes. I mean, even if you have a guy, your your neighbor comes over and plows the driveway, as soon as he drives away, let me tell you, there's still plenty to clean up afterwards. I mean, there is. You say thank you to him and you leave, but there's still plenty of stuff to work. And the school department has that. So, once again, I'm I'm not saying anything about the Parks Department or Scotty. I'm just saying, it takes it, it takes a village to get this done. And in the work between the school department, the Parks Department and the schools is working great right now. So let's just help out the school department because they're they're one part of it.
Yeah, Chris, your point, Chris, is just using the high school as an example. Every year we drop two pieces of big equipment up there.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just at the high school to help with the removal of the of the snow. With the, you know, that's how big the high school parking lots are. You know, that we bring in two huge pieces of equipment plus everything else that we supply in the town.
Well, the other thing too is, let's not forget, in the middle of a big snowstorm or an ice storm, even worse, water runs down and freezes in a little spot. Well, you can't stop the highway department plowing and cleaning to go deal with that little spot. But the high school, the middle schools, they need that spot sanded immediately because the kids, you know, they're gonna run on the ice and have fun and it becomes a safety issue. So it's a whole myriad of things that this truck can do. And one of it is that it's small. Michael, you're right, we need the gigundo pieces of equipment to deal with the big areas. But they can fit in little areas.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments on that?
No, no.
Okay, Article twenty one. Again, land to the Conservation Committee. Michael, this sounds like yours.
Yeah, so this is, Al, this is about a six point six acre, um, parcel of land that I'm actually gonna read it right off of the article that is, um, by Broad Street, Fairview Avenue and adjacent to Stalbrook. And we're we're gonna turn it back to the Conservation Committee. Again, it's an article referred to sponsor. But the purpose for doing this is, uh, wetland and open space protection, stormwater management, conservation purposes. And it's also part of the recommended Milford Comprehensive Plan. So again, it's land that the town is gonna transfer to the Conservation Committee for the purpose of, again, the the open space protection, stormwater management, uh, things like that.
Michael, where is this land?
It is, it's at the end of Broad Street, Fairview Avenue and adjacent to Stalbrook.
Now, for people who don't know Milford well, where is that?
Uh, well, I know where Stalbrook is and I know where Fairview is, but I'm not sure where Broad Street is, Al, to be honest with you.
Yeah, Broad Street got me, Stalbrook, somebody said I wanted to get there. Where would you tell them to go?
Well, Stalbrook's off of, um, Birch.
So tells you at least what part of the town it's in.
It's down in, well, for argument's sake, in the plain section. It's off of, off of one oh nine. Yeah.
So, you know.
But Fairview Avenue, isn't Fairview Avenue off of Carroll Street?
Interesting question. I'm gonna have to check that.
Because I know Stalbrook is the Stalbrook condos.
Right.
So, but I think that I I could be wrong, but I thought Fairview was up off of Carroll Street, up on the hill.
Could be.
This is all down by, I mean, it, I don't, I didn't mean to interrupt you like you're having the conversation. This is all down by Coles and, uh, Pepper and Cheese.
Oh, you know, Chris, you're right. Fairview was, Fairview was a write-off of one oh nine too.
Exactly.
Even Broad Street's next to it. You're right. You're a hundred percent right. So, yeah, it's all down.
Either way, this is, this is specifically right by, uh, there's water there, an aquifer that goes through there. Which, number one, that's important. Number two, have you ever driven around and realized that we're losing empty space at a ridiculous rate in this town? Every place that I, you drive around and there used to be trees there, there's a house. So I'm I'm not the biggest tree hugger in the world. I do throw away plastic bottles. But when you're in Milford, I'm getting a little disappointed seeing the trees leave our town. I know it sounds lame, but I I I miss it, you know? It's it's, we're we're losing lots. And so anytime we can protect areas like this, especially when they're near, when they're near an aquifer, I'm I'm in favor of it.
So, Al, so if you were to take a right on Birch Street, like you're heading to the fire station?
Exactly.
It would be all the land on the left-hand side. It is interesting because one of those pieces of land on one oh nine was supposed to be sold and then and the sale did not really go through because of the wetlands that were in the back.
Exactly. It's by Craft Roots and Hillview Rental and that type of stuff.
Right.
The main street of Birch Street, people know the second fire station. And it waters, it gives them an idea of what's down there.
Yeah.
Okay, this, Article twenty two is Chris's favorite article.
No, it's your favorite article, but it's my favorite article to quote you on, potato chip money.
Yeah.
And actually, as we have joked lately, it's now granola bar money. And now that should be your new moniker, granola bar money. Um, quickly, guys, I know we have a lot to go through. But just like we talked about earlier, that every cent of this town has to be, um, accounted for. Every quarter or credit card swipe that goes through a vending machine, um, needs to be accounted for. So all this does is that all this money that the kids at the high school and and any parents who visit for sporting events, and any money that goes into those machines, those machines, the money there is dedicated to the Student Activities Fund, which pays for field trips, T-shirts for seniors, that type of stuff. So this money, this, um, article, excuse me, just allows the transfer of the money from that account to the Student Activities Fund.
Correct.
Granola bar money from now on, Alberto.
Uh, doesn't sound the same.
It doesn't, but also it's called a potato chip money.
Okay, Article twenty three. A lot of people don't understand when you see an individual business in Milford petitioning the town for a liquor license. Somebody want to, Mike, you want to explain how you get a liquor license and why somebody would be petitioning us?
Well, what it is, is, and again, this came up the other night, Alan. I believe that, uh, our co's market is gonna have an attorney at town meeting to explain this. But what this is, is this is granting the Board of, what a selectman, the Select Board, um, the authorities.
I can't do it either, Mike. It's, I, it slips off the tongue every time.
Yeah, to petition the legislature to, uh, provide us the opportunity or the availability to grant another liquor license to the town of Milford. So what it is, is it's just, it's, town meeting will authorize the Select Board to petition the state legislature for an additional liquor license in the town of Milford, which will, hopefully, if it passes, go to our co's market.
So this is because we're at our legal limit right now.
That is correct.
So, an individual business goes to town meeting and is asking the town meeting to ask the selectman or to direct the selectman to petition the legislature in Boston for a liquor license above our minimum, our maximum.
That is correct. That is correct. To add an additional.
And then it comes back to the selectman to approve it. It's the carousel of government. It's wonderful.
Right, so the town meeting says yes. They push it down to the Select Board. If the, well, the Select Board then just has to do it because town meetings already said so, which goes to the legislature in Boston and all the lobbying starts there, which then comes back, and I guess the Select Board would issue it once they have permission, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, once it comes back and it's approved by the legislature, the Select Board would be the issuing authority.
The carousel of government, Alberto.
I love it. And that again was referred to sponsor. It's not a finance article that the finance committee would take up. That really is a Select Board issue. The Select Board has to decide how they feel and what they'll recommend to town meeting. Correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Article twenty four, service record changes. Somebody want to explain what a service record is and why we want to change it?
I think it's about it, you know, it's a, it's a non-financial, um, uh, article here. Um, you know, it's from the personnel board. And, you know, really, when you think about service records, it's really keeping track of a lot of each kind of data and understanding. it's really keeping track of a lot of HR kinda data and understanding like pay grades and classifications. And it's really a compliance matter, so I think we need to, um, in, in, invest in, in making sure that we're following the, the, the laws and the rules around, um, keeping track of service records, where this is about. There's some language in here about keeping, you know, the confidential records separate from service, um, you know, confidential health is specifically away from service records. And, you know, you imagine, you know, you know, we all have a lot of personal information that has to be protected on this day and age, so there's a lot of, uh, requirements that have to get, you know, handled the right way. So, uh, really not a financial matter, but you can understand the compliance side of it.
Well, you know, when you think about it, we don't have a comprehensive policy on how you keep records. Different departments keep them differently. And unfortunately, as you mentioned, some people, not out of malice, but they have your health record mixed with your pay record, mixed with your performance records. And, I mean, anybody in industry, like, we have our green folders, which are service records, and then we have our red folders by HR, which are all the sensitive information.
Yeah, I think, I think, Al, you know, I used to say all the time, and, you know, we made reference to it earlier about the hundred and sixteen million, but I can remember when the, when the budget in the town was a hundred million dollars, and I used to say, this is a hundred million dollar a year corporation. It's not a hundred, you know, you can call it a town, but it's a corporation. And I used to say, we don't have a human resources department. So we've made, we've made great strides, you know, we've got a human resources department. And this is just another example of human resources taking, you know, taking the bull by the horns and protecting, as, as Brent said, protecting, you know, individuals' personal information properly the way it's supposed to be, just like the three of us, the four of us do, I should say, in, in the private industry. You can't, you can't get to my personnel file without going through human resources, and they're not gonna give it up.
Mike, you're a hundred percent right, and, and the four of us have been involved with this for a long time, a long time, all of us. We never even thought about this ten years ago. We needed someone to tell us and say, hey, Mike, hey, Al, hey, Brent, hey, Chris, you gotta do this. And Mike, you're a hundred percent right, that with that hundred million dollar corporation, we needed someone to tell us this, and in the introduction to Maureen in the HR Department, we're finding out left and right, all the things that, I don't wanna say doing wrong, we just didn't know we could do it better.
That's correct.
So, to your point, I, I, I couldn't agree with you more. And the, the benefits that we're reaping from getting into the twenty-first century in the town of Milford has been fantastic, and I think this is another example of that, so. I agree a hundred percent, Mike.
This was the first time in a long time that I walked out of a Personnel Meeting and had a really high degree of confidence. When Kristen speaks, she comes across as somebody, well, she has been doing this for a long time. She does know what is needed. And again, you do it partly because the law says you have to. But this is Milford, you do it more importantly, cause you wanna do it right. You wanna make sure people are being paid the same for the same job. You wanna make sure that people are being treated the same. I mean, we can hide behind the fact that we have to do it by law, but even if we didn't, I believe the people in Milford want to treat everybody fairly.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And that, again, was referred to sponsor, because that may be passed over. Okay, the last two articles before we come back. Every year, we clean up the pennies. You know, we have, I mean, people used to laugh when we had articles. Uh, we have one this year, where we went to rewire the town hall, you know, sixty grand or whatever. Rick spent it down to fourteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
But Alberto, you know me, I want my change.
Right, exactly. And the only way you get it is through town meetings. So town meeting has to go through, and this year, we only have four articles that are open. The town meeting has to go through and say, yes, there's twenty-two thousand dollars that we didn't spend on a sidewalk tractor. There's ten thousand dollars that the Police Department didn't spend. Take it all back, put it in the general fund and repurpose it.
And the total number, Al, correct me if I'm wrong, it's somewhere around thirty-five thousand?
Yep, thirty-four six ninety-one, exactly.
Yep, yep.
I think what's, what's interesting about this one, you know, if you're newer to understanding town meeting and maybe the accounting of the way the town works, it's just a little different than it works in companies. Um, so here, here, this is money that's been assigned to a project, and it has to stay assigned to that project until we bring it back. And that's what this is, but that's different than, you know, maybe at home, you know, when you didn't spend all your money, you still have the money in your pocket here. The money's just stuck on the project because it's been assigned to something until we close it out. This is about bringing that thirty-five thousand dollars back.
And it should be, because if I, as a town meeting member, voted to give you ten thousand dollars to go do trees, and you bring it in at eight, you should get an accolade for that. But you don't go, you don't have the ability to spend the other two thousand dollars on roadwork without coming back. This money goes back into the kitty, and now the new articles come out, so town meeting has a chance to tell you what you can do with the two thousand dollars.
I think that's an example, Al, of, of, of where we really need to give credit to the department heads in this community, um, that, you know, every year, there's, there always seems to be money coming back in. Um, and, you know, I'm not gonna talk about other communities, but, you know, the old rule of thought was, you get to the, the end of your fiscal year and you got ten thousand dollars laying around, you're gonna go look for something, you're gonna buy a new lawn tractor, or buy a new plow for one of the trucks. In the town of Milford, it's been my experience that, you know, there's always money coming back to the general fund, which is really a, you know, a, a, a good thing, and it shows us that our department heads are, are managing the departments properly.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and I, and I couldn't agree with you more. And then also, the one thing I do wanna highlight is that pretty much on, I mean, not in particular, um, purchases for like trucks and that type of, there's a contingency money put into every project as well. So that is money that is there to not be spent for that project, if they're just in case. So for every project that I, that is done, I'm expecting the contingency money, unless there is an issue, to come back to the town. And to Mike, to your point, the department has it, or whoever's still working on that project, they've done a great job about, hey, we budgeted this for contingency, but guess what? We didn't spend it, and look, it's coming back to the town again, so.
Yeah, it's the same with Article twenty-six. When you look at the fact that you have to have a balanced budget.
Yep.
Years ago, we eliminated any chance of playing shenanigans with, well, I'm gonna have salary money, or I'm gonna build in expense money, but I really didn't mean it. I was gonna hire somebody anyway, so I'll take my expense money, move it to salary. Basically, at the end of the year, Zach has to go through and say, okay, Chris, we gave you ten dollars. You're supposed to spend six on salary, four on something else. If it went five and five, cause you balanced expense with salary by not bringing somebody in, that's okay, but you gotta come to town meeting and get them to approve moving the money to balance the books.
And again, Al, that number is somewhere around thirty thousand three hundred and thirty-six, correct?
Yeah, twenty-five three three six.
Yep.
So it's not a huge amount of money, but it, Chris always says, it's change that we want.
Right.
Now, we're coming to the end of the program. I will apologize, cause I intentionally did not take up Articles nine and ten that deal with the Geriatric Authority. It's a very important discussion, that's a very detailed discussion, and we need a show all by itself to, um, go through that. So Articles nine and ten, there will be broadcast, um, FinCom meetings that people who are interested can get detailed information, but I did not wanna go over those articles in two minutes. Gentlemen, we're at the end. I thank you for coming on and for trying to make it easier for people to understand.
Thank you, Al, thank you, Chris, and thank you, Brent.
Dan, Al, thank you for doing the show. It's, it's one of the great ways that the members of our community are able to see what the four of us and, and hundreds of other people do, um, so I, I really appreciate it.
And as always, to our six loyal viewers, may God bless.
Four of them are here.
Four of them are here. I love it. May God bless, may tomorrow be a safer day than today, and I hope this show has shown you how much goes into the budget in Milford and bringing services, because we really do take seriously, it's always easy to look at how to spend more. But there's a lot of thought that goes to the seniors who are living on fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred a month, and these are the people who built Milford. We're here because we're standing on their shoulders, and it's important we don't forget them. So I won't go, go any further, good night, Al, thanks for joining.
Good night, Al.
Thanks, have a good night.